It is a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. I just want, I'm gonna mic up. We're gonna record this so that folks that couldn't make it will get an opportunity to hear what we've, what we're doing. It is a pleasure to start this, to kick this off. This, this meeting is really part of our 2020 budget process. From now on, one of the things that we will do as part of the budget process is have this type of meeting to basically give a highlight of where we are in the budget process, budget to actual for the fiscal year that we're in, so that we kind of, you kind of know where we are, how we're doing with the budget that was approved. Of course, a reminder, our budget cycle runs from July 1st to June 30th. So we are in the 2019 budget. What we're gonna be presenting with budget to actual will be the first five months of the fiscal year. The reason for that is that we tend, our finances run about a month and a half behind actual date in reporting wise, so you'll actually be getting July through November is what Tina will be covering. And so we wanna show you what we're currently doing with the budget that was approved by the council and that went into effect July 1st. Tina's gonna make that presentation. After that, we are also going to be talking about capital projects, what we're doing with the current capital projects in this year's budget. We will hit a little bit on capital project, the five-year capital project budget, but really the design of this meeting is to talk about what's happening in this year's budget due to the fact that we have a proposition that passed that has cut back revenue that was anticipated, and so we want to make sure that everybody understands where, where the, that, what we're gonna do with the capital and what, what capital projects are gonna move forward and which ones are not gonna move forward. As part of this also, we want to share a five-year forecast with everybody, both on the revenue side, what does the revenues look like for the city over the next five years, and what do expenditures look like based on this year's budget and kind of the last couple of years? What would it look like if we continue spending in the same vein that we're, that we're currently spending in? So we'll, that will, we'll take that up to Jack's portion. Jack, our street superintendent, is going to give a, he's revised or updated a road maintenance presentation that he, that he gave and the streets rating PowerPoint, and we thought that that would be worth having everybody re-up on and remember kind of what, what we've been talking about as far as street maintenance, because that is probably one of the bigger ticket items that, that we have as we move forward that are, we're gonna have to, frankly, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna address. And then the final thing that, that we will cover in this, in this session will be possible revenue streams that we will be looking at in, for this, in the 2020 budget, as well as what future revenue sources we may be looking for past the 2020 budget process. And with that, I will turn it over to Tina to start her presentation.
Well, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for everyone in attendance today as well. I'm going to actually review with you the fiscal year 19, year-to-date budget versus our actuals, and like Mr. Foggan said, that runs from July through November. And we're gonna start off looking at the general fund. So we are five months through the fiscal year, which is 41.7% through our fiscal year. So that's really where we wanna be when we're talking about collecting revenues. If we're significantly below that, we need, we should have a reason for that, and maybe, hopefully, we're even above that. So that's kind of what we're looking at when we're looking at these five months. So in the general fund, and this, these are the large class of categories of revenues that we collect for TPT or our transaction privilege tax, we are at 41.7% at $7.37 million. When we look at our state shared revenues, you'll see that we're above that at 42.6%. We've collected almost $3.5 million. Remember, there are three different state shared revenues that we collect in the general fund. We have our franchise taxes that we are only at 29.6% that we have only collected. And if you recall, in our, in our first quarter financial recap that we talked about in December, I had noted that we are doing some accrual adjustments. Instead of adjusting at the end of every year, we're making some adjustments monthly, and that is the reason why this is below where we should be. So there's no reason for concern. Licenses and permits are slightly below where we should be, but it's a very small amount, and that's mostly in our business license, in our business license category. Building permits also slightly down where we should be, but remember, we're not collecting commercial fees on any of our building permits any longer, and we weren't really sure what to budget for in fiscal year 19. So we shouldn't be worried about that either. Fines and forfeitures are about a third of where we budgeted. Charges for services, so golf courses, parks, pools, police services, some of the fire services, those are all under our charges for services, and we're above where we should be at this point in the fiscal year. And then other things like interest and donations. So you'll see that for the year through November, we are at 41.5% or almost $12 million. So pretty much right on track where we should be. Looking at our general fund expenditures, we have many departments in the general fund, and so instead of listing each department as far as what we have spent through November, I just decided to break it up by the category of expenditures, which there are four in the general fund. We've got our personnel, our supplies and services, our internal services and capital outlay. So when we look at our personnel, all of the departments in the general fund, again, we are 41.7% through the fiscal year. We are below where we should be, which is a good thing on the expenditure side. We are also below where we should be on the supplies and services side. And internal services, those will always be exactly what the budget is. We allocate a certain amount, amount each month, and it equals to the full year. So month over month, it will always be right on track with the budget. And then capital outlay is above where, where we should be, not where we should be, but where the, the 41.7% level. And that's because when the budget gets approved, people go out and spend those big purchase, big-ticket dollar items, but it will not exceed the budget at the, by the end of the year. So we're fine with that as well. HERF, also another important fund and one that we paid quite a bit of attention to. When we look at our budget versus actuals in the HERF fund, so not looking at pavement preservation, just strictly the HERF fund right now, and looking at revenues, not transfers, we have our HERF state shared revenue, and we have a restaurant and bar TPT tax. Those are the two major revenue sources. And you'll see that we are above where we budgeted in both of those areas in the HERF fund. And overall, we are at 45.4% for the year, collecting $1.6 million through November. I did make a note on the pavement preservation fund at the bottom because that does contribute to the HERF fund, and we are ahead of where we should be in that fund through November as well. We know that things will change later in the year, but through November, we're ahead of where we should be. Looking at our HERF expenditures, there are two different departments in HERF. That's our streets admin division and our streets operation division. And again, you'll see that our HERF, our HERF fund is, those divisions are actually spending less than what is budgeted. The supplies and services is significantly less than what the July through November percentage is, and that's really mostly because the public works department knew that the, that the TPT was going to be on the ballot, and was, has just been very cautious through that point to not spend everything that was allotted. When we look at the other operating funds, the revenues and expenditures, we've listed them all here, and we won't go through every single one, but over on the column, the table represents all of our revenues through November, and you'll see the percent of the budget column. And as we look down that percent, we're, we're pretty close or above that 41.7% level. You'll notice that wastewater and sanitation are slightly below. That does have to do with our new utility billing system. We're behind in November billing, and so there are several, gosh, we've probably only collected 50% of November, what we should have in November. So that is one of the reasons why each of those are below where they should be. The airport, again, I've talked about there being grant revenues being budgeted in the, in the airport fund. We have not collected those yet, the reason for it being below the 41.7% level. And then all of the rest of them are pretty, pretty close. And when we look at the expenditure side, you'll see that almost every single, almost every single operating budget is below that 41.7% level. Transit slightly above because they purchased one of their capital items right in the beginning of the fiscal year, and IT always pays very large one-time, one-time expenditures for software maintenance, annual maintenance services. So that explains that. And that is our, our fiscal year 19 budget to actual where we are through November. And I will hand it back over to Mr. Foggan.
If you just wanted to take questions?
Nope. Okay, yeah, I certainly will. Does anybody have any questions on our, on our budget and actual comparisons so far? No? Okay, great. Just continue. Okay. All right. So looking at our five-year forecast. So we are not presenting every single fund today. We are presenting the, the general capital project funds, which we have three of them, our general fund, and then also our HERF fund. Those are the three that we're going to look at for the, for the five-year forecast. So when we look at our general fund, we have two major revenue sources or two major revenue types of sources, and that is our state shared revenues and our transaction privilege taxes. So for fiscal year 19, you're going to see that we expect to collect about $16.8 million. Again, this is estimates only, and we're only halfway through the year for estimates, and $8.3 million in state shared revenues. Now, you'll notice that from fiscal year '20 through fiscal year '24, that TPT number jumps up quite a bit. The reason for that is because, first of all, growth, a growth rate, but you'll recall that in fiscal year 19, you had budgeted for construction sales tax to be transferred out of the general fund and into the capital projects fund. Hence, the reason why there is a significant drop from fiscal year, or an increase from fiscal year '20 going forward compared to fiscal year 19. Other than that, the growth rate that we are using on transaction privilege tax is 2.75%. That basically takes into consideration a 20-year average. It's actually almost a percent lower than our 20-year average. And that 20-year average takes into consideration the recession that we went through as well as the boom. So we wanna be sure that we're below where, what, what our average was during that time, and, and we are significantly. And then state shared revenues, you'll see that they, they, they increase just slightly. We usually just estimate those to increase about a half percent to 1%, not really knowing what the state's going to do. When we look at our general fund's revenues, the expenses and the transfers within the general fund, starting with fiscal year 19 and going out five years, you'll see that in fiscal year 19, there is a shortfall between our revenues, or what we're estimating in 19, between our revenues and our expenditures. We're expecting to collect a total of $29.94 million and spend just over $30 million. Again, part of that has to do with the transfer of construction sales tax and other expenses in the fund. However, when we look at '20 to '24, you're going to see that we actually do not have that shortfall any longer. The difference, again, is that construction sales tax. It's about an $800,000 difference, and you're going to see that all the way through, and that's primarily the main reason why we don't see that shortfall. We pulled that out of the fiscal year '20 to '24, five-year forecast, not knowing what we were gonna do for fiscal year '20 to '24. So just kind of reevaluating everything and leaving it as it was pre-fiscal year 19, as far as that's concerned. Looking at our five-year forecast for the general fund's fund balance. So you remember that our fund balance is 25 to 50% of our operating expenditures and recurring transfers, not the one-time transfers, but our recurring transfers. We also, in the general fund, have, we kind of segregate our general fund balance into two different balances. One of those is our general fund's fund balance, and the other is what we call our tourism fund balance. And that's because we collect 2% room tax in our general fund, but those monies are dedicated to tourism. And so we wanna be sure that we track what we're receiving for tourism and what we're spending on tourism, so that we always, so that we're able to, to share and show what we have kind of remaining in that balance. Right now, those tourism dollars are used to basically make up the shortfall that the powerhouse has and the revenues that it collects versus the expenditures that it, it pays out, as well as pays a portion of our economic development budget. That's what those monies are currently used for. And you'll see that that particular balance continues to deplete over the years, and in fiscal year '24, we expect it to be down to about $200,000. Now, looking at the general fund's fund balance piece, you'll see at the end of fiscal year 19, we're expected to have about $16.79 million in fund balance, and then it will increase slightly year over year by nine, eight to $900,000 based on our, based on our forecast. And at the end of fiscal year '22, have just over $22 million in it. However, we need to remember that in our, in our fund balance policy, anything over 50% is, based on our current policy, should be used, should be pulled out of fund balance and used for one-time expenditures. So we would probably never get to that level, but not knowing, again, what to spend that money on. We left it in. So that makes up the general fund's five-year forecast. Looking at HERF's five-year forecast, its major revenue sources for fiscal year 19 are the pavement preservation transfer. We also have our HERF state shared revenue and our restaurant and bar tax. Again, all of our TPT, we budget at about 2.75% growth, and state shared revenues less than 1%. And that's consistent across the board with, with HERF as well. The big difference in this picture is, of course, the pavement preservation transfer that we are expecting to receive in the HERF fund of just over $3 million that we will not, we are not expecting to receive going forward. So that gives you an idea of what that will look like. So then looking at our HERF revenues, expenses, transfers and the fund balance over the next five years. Fiscal year 19, so the blue line are our total revenues and transfers, including transfers, we should collect close to $7.2 million. We expect to spend on the red line, $5.57 million, and end up with about $3.6 million in fund balance. Now, going into fiscal year '20, of course, the revenues are going to decline to about $4 million, but because we're going to have such a large amount in our fund balance, because public works won't be able to, won't be able to get contracts signed for some of the pavement preservation repairs that need to go on, so it's going to carry over into fiscal year '20, our expenditures are actually going to increase to about $6 million, leaving our fund balance at $1.49 million in fiscal year '20. From '21 to '24, we, you'll see that our revenues and expenditures basically wash each other out, leaving about $1.5 to $1.6 million in our fund balance from '21 to '24. I also wanna point out that in '21 to '24, we are, we're using that average $850,000 a year, that's what's included in here, for pavement preservation. We revert back to that pre-fiscal year 19 figure. And with that, I'll take any questions on five-year forecast information. Okay? When we go into capital projects?
Actually, I just wanted to mention-
Yeah, great. Yep. Well, there it is. There you go, yeah.
Actually, Tina, I did have a question.
Sure.
You said that right now that we're not at 50%, and in the answer, back on page 12 on the general fund balance, wherever we at right now, that percentage?
So for, at the end of fiscal year '18, we are over 50% base, we are over it, but for fiscal year 19, we will not be that.
Any other questions for Tina? I just wanna rewind a little bit on these slides, and there's one thing I do wanna point out that is, is germane to, to us moving as we move forward, and I will just, oh, am I missing it? Fund balance. Where is it listed here? Oh, yeah. Okay, fund balance. Just so that everybody is aware, on fund balance, the one, the one piece that is not part of our slides, that, but does need to be discussed, is, and we will get to the capital projects in just a minute, which is a big piece of this, but one of the things, and probably one of the bigger challenges that I found in the short time that I've been here, is our compensation package for employees. And we're right now in the process of working through with a consultant on where we are with our comp for our pay and total benefits package for our employees. And I just wanna point out that on this fund balance, one of the things that Tina and I and the leadership team are going to be working on, and it's being worked on right now by HR, is how does total compensation affect, affect, ultimately affect this? Now, the one thing that, that I will tell you is that we, we will not, unless it's an ultimate emergency, is we will not base the budget and pay on one-time revenue. That will always be a mistake, okay? And so as, as we look at the budget for 2020, and as we take the study that's provided by our consultant, what, this, this is, this is pretty bold. My suspicion is that once we, once we get the compensation study back, that when we get employees adjusted within the right ranges, and where we get them located with, with pay increases and a, and a system to give pay increases over time, that, that we're looking at probably a fix, haven't looked at it lately, last time we looked at it, that, a total fix to the pay system was running somewhere between a million and $2 million. So that in itself is a huge hurdle to overcome, but something that we will be tackling as part of the 2020 budget. And I know that the council had this conversation somewhat for the 2019 budget, and that's why we're doing the study now, so that we know where, where we are and kind of what the uphill battle is. So I don't want anybody to think that there's any real reality to us getting to $22 million in fund balance, because there's plenty, there are plenty of capital projects that are, that are out there that are gonna affect our livability, and they're gonna affect just core services that we provide, but the, under, the, the foundation of all of that is what we're, how we're taking care of our employees and what our total compensation looks like. So I just wanna make sure that, that as we look at this number, it's not, this, as Tina pointed out, this is not pie in the sky. I, I really appreciate the approach that she's taking to do this five-year forecast. I think it's pretty reliable, and like she said, she's looked at a 20-year period in which to take and build this model. So I, I'm confident in the numbers. What I'm not confident in is, is what, moving forward, those, those will be for expenditure, you know, the expenditure-wise, it's gonna really be dependent on what the council decides to do over the next couple of years with compensation and capital projects, so.
Just a quick question. The compensation study that you and your staff are doing right now, is it also gonna take into effect the impact on the city's retirement systems?
And that's, so that's another thing that we're going to take on as a presentation in a work session, and that will have to be part of the conversation. So you're absolutely right. And one of the things that, that Tina and I are looking at is the ability to front-load some of the retirement system with some fund balance, because there, there may be some good cost savings in that. And so in, when we make that presentation, that is part of what we're gonna be talking about. So, any other, yes, Gina?
Can you tell us how many years the employees have gone without raises?
I can't, but Tina can.
So I wanna say 2000, I wanna say 2012 or '13 was the last time that we received anything. We actually received, did our, we did our compression adjustments, but as far as just an annual, let's look at the employees, we get some sort of increase, I wanna say it was '13. Do you remember the, who was 2000? It was right around, it's been a long time.
Well, yeah, and taking into account 2013, budget year 2013 is really 12 and 13, so, and we're now working on 2020. And so that, and again, council in discussing this in the last buzzer cycle recognized that we were falling farther and farther ahead. And even, even if we, if we didn't provide any raises, the one thing that we've absolutely gotta get to is some kind of cost of living adjustment to salaries, because if, if we don't take that on, we start falling behind even the people that we can, the organizations that we compare ourselves to, and that, that could be devastating to employing people, so.
I have one other question.
Sure.
If you could go back to the previous slide that shows the projected revenues and expenses. I just wanted to get a clarification, this one.
Yeah.
So if you look at this slide, it looks like there's plenty of money, but I wanna clarify that what was stated earlier is this is based on previous year's spending. So this is, pavement preservation was at $800,000, which we know needs to be in upwards of $4 or $5 million in order to maintain what we have now. It doesn't show increases for PSPRS, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the, the retirement system, the impact that's had on our numbers isn't reflected here. So this, to me, does not seem like an accurate slide, because it looks like there's a cushion, and we have plenty of revenue going forward, but we really do not. If we wanna maintain our streets, if we wanna do any improvements to infrastructure, and we have no choice on the retirement system, those payments will be made.
Well, and, and so in building a five-year forecast, you do your best to predict the, the steady increase of both the opportunities of revenue, which is the good thing, and you do your best to capture growth in expenditures. So I will say that some of that, that growth in the expenditure side is captured, or the, you know, general increases in expenditures are captured. So there is a little piece of retirement captured in those numbers, but it's impossible for us to predict what the steady increase is gonna be for the retirement system. So this is, this is really just our best guess, is kind of take out the crystal ball and look at it, and that, that gap that we refer to really becomes, that's the, how big a gap that really is gonna be, will be determined through our budget process and priorities and strategies, strategic planning that's done by the city council. But you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, we could get into 2022, there could be a, a huge problem in the stock market, we could see skyrocketing costs for retirement, and it may eat up all of that. So the forecast is just your best guess with the general information that you have, but you're right.
And can I just add to that? So we do, on the personal cost, we do take a slight consideration for the PSPRS, not knowing what that rate's going to, but we do inflate that just slightly over the years. And then I just, I just remembered your question about the raises. So actually, it was 2007 was the last raise, and 2013, we began like a one-time stipend, and the next year, we started to do compression adjustments. So it's been a very long time since we've had raises.
So it's about 2007?
2007, okay. So we got that clarified. Last raises, kind of planned raises were in 2007, and there's been some adjustments, compression adjustments, okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Any, any other question? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, actually, I was gonna steadily address some of my concerns, because those fund balances are based on the minimums of 50%.
Those fund balances that are being displayed here are much higher than that, and the only reason for that is not known in what, what the council is going to decide over the years, what they're going to pull out of that fund balance to meet the 50%. So we went ahead and just continued to build on the fund balance, again, not knowing how much is going to be-
Actually, one of the goals, sorry to cut you off, Tina. So one of the goals of a five-year forecast is just to make sure- So, one of the goals of a five-year forecast is just to make sure that expenditures, that we see a picture that shows that we're not going to outpace in the next five years, that revenues are not going to be outpaced by expenditures. So, this, this slide is actually kind of, in some ways, it's a, it's a good news slide, in the fact that the red line stays below. It just becomes, as priorities come up and as we, as we officially address some of the things that have been ignored, AKA the, the pay system, how much tighter does that red line get to, to the revenues?
Well, and that leads to my question, because if we were to say that the $3 million, the pavement preservation has to come from that...
Right.
Then, that, that changes that significantly. If we were to say that $3 million for capital improvement projects has to come from that, we've inverted that long.
Yep, yep.
And we're in hope, and I think that's really important for people to understand, is that's all we have to work with now, and, and those real needs are still there.
Yep, they have not gone away.
They have not been addressed, and that's all we have to address them with, and if you look at that gap, that's about all we have to address them with, without any different revenue sources.
Correct.
So, I just wanted to clarify that. And also, going back to the five-year forecast on the HIRF, oh, this slide, and you said it back to 850,000 a year available for pavement preservation, which was the average for 11 years before we increased it, and now we are back to that.
Is that the red line?
No, it's still there.
Page 14.
The point being, we're going to hear it again later today. We need a millions of dollars a year just to get us hopeful that we could get our streets and facilities. So, I look at these, and it looks optimistic or rosy, but I look at it and think that is a red line as soon as we start addressing the needs of the city.
Yeah.
Slide up page 11, it really is a highlight, all it shows you is that you can carry on with status quo.
Right.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, you still have your...
It doesn't address anything.
True, true, true. That's, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Good points. Any other questions? All right. All right. No, it's, it's all good. All right. Well, man, I was hoping Tina would talk longer. Just mixed the rest.
All right, we're going to tag team this, I think, right, Mr. Foggan?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. All right, so, looking at our general capital projects. So, remember, general capital projects, we have three different funds for our general capital projects, and our general capital projects are streets, buildings, public safety, parks and recreation. Those are our general capital projects. We have our capital projects fund, we have our pavement preservation fund, and we have our I-11 East Kingman Connection project fund. So, all of the funds are here, are, are displayed in each of these charts. So, for fiscal year 19, our estimated revenues for our capital projects fund, we've got our budget versus what our estimate is. Now, if we go to the very last set of bars, those are our totals, and that's what we'll look at right now. So, our total budgeted, budgeted revenues were just over $7 million. Now, that included four and a half million dollars in loan proceeds for a fire station. We know that we're not, we're not moving forward with the fire station at this point, so we're pulling that out. And when we pull that out, we get to that other number of about $2.6 million. So, we're collecting our 2% room tax that we're estimating to receive just over $600,000. We're also collecting the construction sales tax. We've budgeted $800,000 and estimating that to be just over $900,000 that we'll transfer in there. And then, our other revenues are just really transfers from other funds to pay for specific projects. So, that makes up our capital projects fund. When we look at our pavement preservation and our I-11 East Kingman Connection project funds, our budget was 3.1 million, 3.19 million dollars for each fund, so 6.38. Our estimate pre-proposition for 13 was about the same. Post-proposition for 13, you'll see that that declines to 1.9 million dollars for each of the funds, so a total of 3.8 million dollars. Those are our estimated fiscal year 19 revenues for each of those funds, or all of those funds. So, as we said, we're going to look, reevaluate our capital projects and bring that to you today as well. And so, when we look at what was estimated to be spent on those general capital projects, these are the projects that are listed, and that's all three funds. This, this includes all, these projects are included in all three of the funds that we just talked about on the previous slide. Now, the highlighted projects are the projects that we have either reduced spending on or that we're expecting to reduce spending on, or have eliminated the spending completely for fiscal year 19. The other projects are just the estimates of what we expect to spend on the projects that we're budgeting. So, we budgeted just over, well, 13 and a half million dollars in projects. We're expecting to spend about 5.5 million dollars. Again, one of the large expenditures is the fire station, which was over four and a half million dollars. We moved that out. There was also going to be some debt service possibly on the fire station, so that came out as well. We had a street sweeper that we were earmarking $100,000 a year for, for the next three years. We pulled that out. We also pulled out a fire truck. We were earmarking 50% of a fire truck in the capital projects fund. We pulled that out also. The amount that's remaining is the portion of a fire truck that we finished paying this year. We received it this year and paid the difference this year. And then, you'll also notice pavement preservation. It's that we're going to be transferring instead, 3, 3,85, 85,000 to HIRF, instead of the 4 million dollars that was originally budgeted to be transferred. And again, all the rest are just the estimates on what we expect to spend on those projects for this year. Do you have anything you want to add?
Question.
Okay. Any questions so far on our capital projects? Okay. So, just to give you an idea of, or remind you of what our five-year capital improvement plan is for this year, meaning that this is not looking into the future for the fiscal year 20, the fiscal year 24 capital improvement plan, we are not even close to there yet. This is what was approved in the fiscal year 19 budget as our capital improvement plan. General capital projects budgeted just over 34.875 million dollars in general capital projects, and you'll see much of those are streets, and they are broken out on the table on the left, and then in chart form on the right. And this just gives you an idea of over five years what was budgeted. Again, not just fiscal year 19, but from 19 to 23. And this is really just for reference purposes, and you'll see the types of projects that are out there. So, then looking at our five-year forecast for general capital projects. So, we will start with the revenue forecast for the three funds that make up our general capital projects. And although I have pavement preservation up there in blue, it's not displaying anywhere, because we're not expecting to receive any revenues for the next five years for pavement, in the pavement preservation fund. And then, you'll see in the I-11 East Kingman Connection project fund, we're only expecting to really receive interest, is what that number is, of about $22,000 a year. And then, in our general capital projects fund, as I said earlier, we are not transferring, we did not include in the five-year forecast a transfer of construction sales tax into the capital projects fund, so it's just the 2% room tax and some interest. And you'll see how that increases about 2.75% year-over-year. And then, what do the fund balances look like in those three funds as well? Again, not really, expecting, not really forecasting to spend anything in those funds yet, until we get more direction from you. So, there aren't necessarily new expenditures in those funds going forward. So, what will the fund balance look like? So, I did not include pavement preservation, everything's going to be transferred to HIRF this year, so there will not be anything at the end of fiscal year 19 or going forward. The capital projects fund is the blue line, you'll see that that is going to increase basically by the revenues that are projected year-over-year, and the same with the I-11 East Kingman Connection project fund. We expect at the end of fiscal year 19 to have just over $6 million in that fund, and then, increase by basically in just year-over-year through fiscal year 24, at this point anyhow.
Any questions for Tina at this point? As the mayor indicated, this is kind of where the news about fund balance gets kind bad. So, what, what we've been doing over the last little while is we've been carrying two different, and we've been having conversations about two different capital improvement project lists. One has been the active five-year capital improvement plan, and the one has been deemed unfunded. There's been a lot of confusion, I, I believe, there seems to have been a lot of confusion about this unfunded versus funded. So, one of the things that I wanted to introduce at this meeting as we move forward is how we talk about capital projects. So, we're going to have the five-year capital improvement plan. Any project that's on that five-year capital improvement plan will have a funding source. If there is not a funding source for that capital project, it will not be on the list, and it will not be, it will not be something that is hanging out there confusing people. What we're going to do is we're going to keep a list based on the strategies and the, what the council's priorities are as we move forward. We're going to keep a list, and this capital projects list, we're going to, we're going to call it future capital projects, and it's just going to be a list, it'll look like this. The bottom number is interesting, but really doesn't say a lot. It, it just is a list of things that as we move forward as a city, we will be looking at what is the livability of our community, what is the priorities of the council to improve livability, what is our responsibility to make improvements to the infrastructure? And so, as, and I'll just, I'll just use an example, and it has, I'm just going to reach into one. So, the parks and recreation has a number of, of projects on this list, and in those, it adds up, if you add them all up, they add up to just over about $8 million. So, if, for instance, the city council decided that they wanted to make a big push on parks and recreation, they would, we as a group, team along with the council, would have to determine how we were going to bring those projects onto the five-year capital plan. That could be a combination of different revenue sources, going to apply for a bunch of grants, we're going to ask the people to bond and have a secondary property tax, we're going to use some kind of development, new construction development fees, but before that gets on our permanent five-year capital project list, we're going to identify, we're going to have to identify revenue before it goes on there, so that it's not, no one's confused or surprised when, if we, if we put those projects on for 2024, we would be starting to communicate now in this 2020 budget that we're going to be asking the people of Kingman, the citizens, to put up a bond, and that there would be a vote for that, so that there's no surprises. And so, there, we're going to try to eliminate that confusion as early and often as we possibly can, but this, this is going to be in the list, and as the council holds their annual planning and budget retreat, these are things we're going to talk about, and the decisions that come from that will determine how, how many things are on this list, how many things come off this list, maybe new things get on it. But this is really just a scoping exercise for what's, you know, what's missing into the future, and that, you know, some of these projects may be 10 years out, but they may be important, ultimately important to the, to the community based on the citizen survey that we're doing, based on livability and policies of the, of the council, and so, and maybe there's something that ends up on there that's just the, you know, that the community just absolutely wants to have at some point. And so, that's, that's kind of where we're, where we're transitioning with our five-year capital plan. If it's on the capital plan, it will have a funding source, power must have kicked back on. There will be a funding source identified. Now, that does not mean that the funding source will be guaranteed, and I, I do need to make sure that that's clear. If there's a grant out there and we feel like we have a good chance of getting a grant for one of these projects in 2022, we're going to do our best to get that grant, and it's going to be on there, and at the, at the end column, we will have how we're going to pay for that. General fund revenue, transfer from this, grant, whatever, whatever it is. So, I just, I just want to make sure that the council understood that, that we're taking this capital improvement budget, we want to make sure that it's understandable, that it's clear, and it's all right to have a list of projects here. And again, based on our, what, what we have is, is going to determine what comes off of this, and one of the things that we're going to be talking about a little bit later is what are revenue streams that, that we can pursue, if any? What revenue streams are out there that can pull some of these things off of this list and put them onto our five-year capital plan, or that can help us just in general operations? So, is that the last slide?
That is.
That's the last slide. So, are there any ca, questions about the capital budget, the process, what's happening this year? I know that the council, when, when the budget, the 2019 budget was built, livability for the people that live in Kingman was a conversation that happened quite often, and so, we're doing the best that we can to keep the, the livability pieces in the, what we've already budgeted. So, we're not proposing any cuts in park improvements. Of course, we've got 300 and, just over $380,000 that was collected as part of development impact fees. Development investment fees, I'll get it right, that has to be spent by the end of 2019, and we're working on that. So, there's those, whether we, whether we like it or not, those, that 380-plus thousand has to be spent. So, that's, that's what we have for capital projects for this year. It, it's a pinch, and moving forward, as the mayor pointed out, with that fund balance, or with expenditures and revenues, the status quo is not going to improve livability in this community, it just simply isn't. And so, as we start talking about revenue sources and being lean and mean as an organization, with lean and mean with great customer service, we're, we're absolutely going to be looking for every dime, nickel and penny that we, we can ultimately have. Now, and I will say that on, I, I completely support what the council and the leadership team has proposed before I got here with your revenue policy, on your, your beginning fund balance, that opportunity to be able to respond to an emergency and keep the doors open and keep services running for three to six months is completely, that is invaluable, and it's the right thing to do. And, and so, I, I support the council's dedication to keeping fund balance, to be able to, to weather those times when, whether it's an emergency or a downturn in the economy or what have you, that, that the citizens have come to expect great services, and that fund balance gives you that opportunity to continue that for, I'll say, a short period of time, because three months, three to six months, even if you could squeeze out nine months, is, that's in the city's lifetime, that's really short, so. So, any questions to this point? Yes, Mayor? Yes, mayor?
It's not a question. Well, I guess it's, yes.
You may make a statement, of course.
No. Well, now that we are back to funding and capital projects through stripping or fund balances basically, this list is truly a wonderful synthesis of things that have been on the books for, some of them for a very long time. But I wonder if you would just address that and talk about how these got there. This was not a quick fix list.
Right.
This was something that's been developed over time.
All right. So I'm going to try my best to do that and Tina's going to kick me into the table when I get it wrong. So, so in the process that the city has had as part of their budget makeup is that they asked the departments to submit capital project requests as part of the budget process. Matter of fact, we're doing that, we're going through that process right now. Those capital projects, the departments are asked to prioritize based on need. So there's the, we can't survive without it, there's the, we've got to do this, and then there's the, boy, it would really help the community if we did this. And so as we've gone along, those projects are presented to the city council and the city council prior, does their prioritization. They look at, at livability, they look at just how, how can we improve the community? And this list generated over time are not, these aren't gee whiz, you know, we're just thinking up things to put on a list. These are things that departments along, the, the leadership team along with elected officials have compiled over the years that if, if there was an extra, if there was any extra money anywhere, this is what the elected officials would like to see happen for, for the improvement of the community.
Thank you.
Don't get it right? Yeah. Yes, Travis?
Well, you know, just looking at that list, livability has really taken a backseat here for a long time. And to sort of reference your compensation study, the reason to do a compensation study is to make sure that you stay competitive, right?
Right.
You have to do the same thing with your citizens too. You have to stay competitive in sort of quality of life things. So that's unfortunate with that. You know, it's easy to take away from.
Well, I, I appreciate that you bringing that up, counselor, because one of the things that we've been keyed in on is economic development and trying to draw employers here, trying to draw business here. The, the challenge that we end, ultimately end up having, and I'll, I'll pick on an industry that I found a hard time getting a provider and that is the medical field. And the challenge that we as a community end up having is if we're not, if we're not focusing on livability and having those things that, that, that make it a great place to live, then it's hard to attract not only the businesses, but the professionals that we absolutely need to provide those services.
It's hard to recruit physicians, it's hard to recruit professors, it's hard to recruit at the industrial park, upper middle management, same problem. I mean, when you look around at all the other cities around, they're building parks, they're doing things that, you know, if I'm a doctor and I want to give my family the quality of life, it's going to go under our seat, right?
Yeah, it is going to go under your decision and, and there's, there's no doubt that that as, as we make decisions moving forward, you know, the question is, are we going to be able to make decisions above and beyond the net, just the necessities of, of the infrastructure?
Well, Ben, it's our responsibility as a council and a city, working all, all of us working for the city is to educate our fellow city members to get them on board what we want to do.
Yep, agreed. And there's, and I will say that the, that the council, since I've been here, has recognized that. We now have a PR person, we're doing a lot more with video, our Facebook presence is, is, is better, our website is better and we still have a long ways to go. But having these conversations and having this type of meeting early, but as I indicated, you know, if there's something like this, if we have something up on this board in this list that the council just absolutely deems to be necessary to improve livability, we place it on the list with a funding source and we start talking about it now, not six months before we want to fund it, not, not, not in, in today's world, even in years, not, not enough. You know, people crave information and we've got to give them good information and we've got to give it to them early and often. So you're, you're absolutely right about that.
Ken is right. I mean, historically, they got everybody clean now and they're using some social media for doing these things, but the city has not done a very good job of coming into the story.
Yep.
Ken's absolutely right.
Agreed. Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're going to move on to Jack's presentation.
So tonight I'll talk to you a little bit about our pavement preservation program, what we've been doing, what we want to do. Obviously, there's been some changes to that and, and a little bit about our asphalt in general. So asphalt's kind of a dry subject. You guys may not get that right now, by, by the end of this, you, you guys will understand. So starting this thing off, let's see by a show of hands, who drove here on asphalt? Couple of you guys must have flew or jumped or did something, but overall, we all got here on asphalt, so that means it's a pretty important item to, to all of us in this room. So first talk to you guys a little bit about pavement basics. Really, this is the presentation goals. What is a pavement preservation program? What are the benefits? Where are we now? What was the plan? Obviously, there's some changes to that. Also, talk a little bit about budget needs and recommendations for the future. So there's some terms that you guys are going to hear throughout this thing and so we'll cover a couple of those. First off is the pavement management system. This is a set of defined procedures for collecting, analyzing, maintaining, reporting payment data to assist the decision makers in, in coming up with the optimum strategy to keep our pavement in a serviceable condition. So in short, it's taking all the data and all the resources we can to help us make informed decisions that are objective and defensible, defensible, you know, and really to help us make decisions that are going to extend the life cycle and lower the life cycle cost of our assets, mainly asphalt here. The pavement preservation program is the second half of that. So this is where we actually put the rubber to the road, so to speak. We're actually going out and we're doing the projects, we're doing treatments that we have identified the needs on with our pavement preservation system. So PCI is going to be the next one. This is a numerical index between zero and one hundred. So it's like rating, you know, a grade. So zero is a failed road, one hundred would be a new road. Use an example, Andy Devine, the section we paved from Fifth Street up to Stockton Hill, that, that would be a hundred. That one's brand new. So as soon as we put that in though, that's going to start to deteriorate in age. If you're looking at a, a road that's lower on the PCI, closer to the failed mark, a good example may be Sunshine. I don't know if you guys have driven that over by the county building. It's, it's in rough shape, it's starting to fall apart on us. Deferred maintenance is another one. So this is a postponement of maintenance and repair activities to save costs or meet our budget needs. Currently, we're sitting at about fifty-five million dollars worth of deferred maintenance. This has been building over time and anytime we have a budget shortfall or we're not funding our pavement preservation to get ahead of that curve, it's going to continue to increase.
Did you say fifty-five million?
Fifty-five million. So I'll give you some statistics for Kingman. We currently have, and this number's a little bit shy, we're due for an update on our inventory. We've accepted some new subdivisions and new roads, but in place in the management system, we'll show four hundred and thirty-four lane miles of asphalt. So to put this into perspective, we could take that same amount of asphalt and pave a twelve-foot road from Las Vegas all the way to Gallup, New Mexico, across Arizona. This represents two hundred and fifty-eight million dollars worth of paved public assets. One thing you're going to note here, it says eight hundred and forty-three average annual preservation, so that's two thousand to present. There's a couple of different numbers that you're going to see out there and in different presentations, we've looked at five years, we've looked at ten years, but this presentation is all based off two thousand to present. So let's talk a little bit about asphalt in general. So asphalt's comprised of two main components. One is rock, one is the binder. The binder, if you see the little gold bars down there, that's because the binder is the expensive part. Rock is durable, binder is not. So the, the binder is really the, the glue, it's what holds everything together. If not, you have dirt roads. So the key, you can watch this slide, the key to preserving our asphalt is stopping oxidation. Oxidation causes ravelling, so we start losing materials off the service and, off the surface and we start losing some of our larger aggregates, causes cracking and eventually leads to failure and potholes, which we're all familiar with. From the time that our asphalt's placed, it will start to deteriorate. Most of this deterioration, the oxidation, will actually, so back that up, not the deterioration in general, but the oxidation, most of that's going to occur within the two, first two to four years of new asphalt. It's just typical, you know, the biggest contributors to that are UV from the sun and also moisture. In order to extend our life cycle and lower the life cycle cost of our asphalt, we need to prevent oxidation. So let's talk a little bit about why we, why pavement preservation is so important. First off, it's a mission statement of the street department. It's what we do, literally. Improves the appearance of the community. We did some projects in some areas and we went in and we graded shoulders and we did surface treatments and, and really dressed up just the asphalt and, and one, it did make the neighborhoods look a lot better. And then you also see other people going out, cleaning up yards and taking care of stuff because it just, the overall appearance and the overall feel of that neighborhood is improved. Maintains the credibility of the organization. Again, it's what we do, so when we're not doing it, people are, are pretty upset about Reduces complaints from residents. I'm sure you guys hear a lot, so do we, especially after rains and things, that, that's typically when, when those come up. Improves resource allocation, so we can actually budget and predict and know when we need to spend money, where we need to spend it and how much we're going to spend. Also, if we're out fixing potholes every day, then the rest of the things that we do, sweeping, road grading, shoulders, weeds, streetlights, signals, whatever, we're, we're reallocating those resources just to manage that problem. A proactive, rather than a reactive, maintenance plan will reduce our life cycle cost. So that's the biggest component of this. One item that we've talked about or I've heard bannered around in here this evening a little bit is livability or quality of life. That's something that I didn't put on here, I really should have, but when you're talking about quality of life, to me, keeping the tires on the car is part of that. So rather than being, you know, at a tire shop spending money you may not have during the holiday season or taking time away from family because now you've got to go deal with something that's damaged, you know, that, that leads into quality of life pretty directly, in my opinion. And that affects all of us. That affects my family, your friends and family, police, fire, economic development, that has an impact throughout our community. So one of the things that's difficult for people to understand is why are we taking care of good roads? This road looks great, why are you doing anything? Go fix the road that's broke. Taking a worst-first approach is about the worst direction we can go. So we actually want to maintain our roads that are in good condition and keep them there. When you're looking at a, a square yard, a three-by-three piece of asphalt that I can do a preventative maintenance treatment on for a dollar to a dollar fifty a square yard, if we don't do that, later on, we're looking to, you know, maybe sixteen dollars and up. And we'll talk about that a little bit further out here. For us, it's a little bit different. We want to maintain our good roads, but you'll see in a map further on, we're kind of short on that at this point in time. So we're going to have to take a dual approach to that and we're going to take a pretty heavy emphasis on maintaining our good roads, but we're also going to have to deal with rehabilitation and reconstruction of roads that are in poor or very poor condition as well, just to try and beat that curve. Currently, the budget is unable to do that. We'll get into budget a little bit further on, but right now, I wouldn't say we're even maintaining our PCI. So these, these are two cores. These were actually provided to us at a meeting that we had with Jim Shannon that was working for Valley City at the time. What this really highlights, if you look at the core on the left side and you see it's kind of grayed out and you look at the year of install and the treatments on that and then you come over here and you look at the year of install and the color of the binder on the, on the right one, the only difference is there's an additional treatment and that, that treatment was placed earlier in that timeframe. So the core on the right's actually older than the core on the left, but you can see the darkness of the binder. So that's what you're trying to maintain. That, the binder on the left, it's still structurally sound right now, but the life cycle on that's been drastically reduced just because it's oxidized and, and you've lost a lot of that, that flexibility and suppleness of the, the binder. So again, people ask, why are you maintaining a good road? Why are you taking care of this? Well, we're trying to keep it that way. We're trying to maintain them at the lowest possible, lowest possible cost and extend that life cycle as long as we can. Example I like to use is it's like changing oil in your car. Will your car run without changing oil? Absolutely, right up until it doesn't. So an oil change is, I don't know, thirty bucks, you know, how much is a new car? So you take that car and you change the oil regularly, you're going to get a lot more miles and a lot more time than if you don't. And at the end of that, when you don't, then the repair, rather than a thirty-dollar oil change is, you know, a couple of grand for, for an engine replacement. So will the roads function? Absolutely, if we don't do anything. They'll function right up until they don't anymore and then it's expensive. So bad sense of humor in, in streets, I guess, but we have our own version of Fifty Shades of Grey. The one on the left is not here, fortunately, although those guys did a great job on patching. They did excellent. Yeah, it's, it's pretty neat. I mean, it almost looks like they did that for, for the fun of it, I guess. The, the road on the road, I'm sorry, the road on the road, the road on the right is an example of failed binder. So this is a section of road here in Kingman. This is after one rainstorm. So I took this picture up the hill, you're only seeing a portion of it. There's, there's forty-plus potholes in this one little section. That's only maybe a third of the potholes that were on that road overall. That's a perfect example. The asphalt's oxidized, you get water into it, traffic, it just falls apart. We had another example of this that was much more high-profile, which was Andy Devine. I'm sure you guys remember that. Same way, we'd go out and patch it and they said, oh, the patches are coming out. It wasn't. Actually, I should have threw it in here. We have a slide, some of you guys have seen our inflatable asphalt. Guys are going to blow the hole out, the potholes, so they could patch it with asphalt and the road's inflating because the delamination was so bad from the failed layers underneath it. It was the same way. It would rain, it'd look like the surface of the moon. We'd go out there and patch it all and literally, right in front of the last patch you did, there'd be another pothole and just every time it rained, it was a maintenance nightmare. We spent a huge amount of time on that until we were actually able to mill that out and then eventually do a, a full milling fill. So we've talked a little bit about the pavement life cycle. If you look at the big white line right there, that is the natural aging curve and we talked about how the, the first, you know, the majority of our oxidation is going to happen at the top. So we start out with a really flat curve and then when we start down, it just gets gradually steeper until we get down to the bottom. And then once it's in, in a poorer, very poor condition, it kind of flattens back out, but it's hard to tell the difference between very poor and poor. Once it's failed, it's failed. The green line on the top is what we would typically use as our preventative maintenance trigger. We're trying to stay in that, that green area, in the higher PCI. Cheaper to maintain, easier to do, lower life cycle cost. That, that line gradually decreases, but you take a, an asphalt that say has a fifteen to twenty-year life expectancy and we stretch those preventative maintenance, maintenance treatments out. We've got roads here that I know were paved in the seventies and are still functioning for us. It took some work, they, they need some major work at this point, but they're still working when they were doing some pavement preservation. Further down, you see the black treatments, so those are getting into the rehabilitation and reconstruction. When you get down there, those are a lot, lot more expensive. They have a lower return on their investment as well. So when you do it, it doesn't bring the PCI and it doesn't bring the condition all the way back up to a hundred. You may see that initially because, oh, the road looks brand new, but the binders, the asphalt properties, those are all stripped and, and they haven't, they don't have a lot of the properties that makes them serviceable. So the flexibility and things from those asphalt, asphalt is gone and then you start seeing premature cracks and things. We can do them there, they'll look better for a while, but again, your deterioration curve is going to be steeper and so your return is going to be, be much, much, much less.
I just took the, the good, the good roads that are non-load and load-rated, which you guys don't really care about, and put those both as yellow and poor and very poor and red. So if you look, the green are our good roads, the yellows are indecent.
The yellows are in decent condition, but we need to make sure we don't let them fall any further. And then the reds are our roads that are in, in poor and very poor condition. There's a lot of red up there. And when we look further, when you're talking about the maintenance and the rehabilitation costs, the red roads are the most expensive to repair because they're so far gone. We can no longer use preventative maintenance treatments. We're going in and doing rehabilitation and reconstruction on these roads. Again, actually, if you think back to the lifecycle slide we had, and you're looking at the, the color deterioration on that, or the color, the way it slides down the chart from green at the top to red at the bottom, this is it right here. We talked a little bit about having to attack our bad roads and still take care of our good roads and take a dual approach. This is why. These roads that are green and yellow, we want to make sure we maintain those, but these roads that are in such poor condition, we're going to have to start bringing those up and getting those into a serviceable condition to actually increase our PCI. And that's going to take a pretty extensive budget to make that happen. So, a lot of information on this one here, but the green line is the total funding for the Streets Division. Now, keep in mind, this is not just the pavement preservation funding, this is total funding. Grading roads, shoulders, street sweeping, signals, all the, all the functions that occur within the Streets Division are represented by these, these budget numbers. So, I, I broke it out, and you can see the, the actual years budget on each one of those. We used to have a couple of different funding sources, general fund, lottery, restaurant and bar, we still have, and the pavement preservation tax. In 2002, if you look, the general fund actually made up just over thirty percent of the, the general operating budget within the Streets Division. 2005, that was removed, and we still had lottery fund for a short period of time. 2010, that completely went away. And then 2012, council adopted a, a barn and restaurant tax, and that was, a portion of that was dedicated to pavement preservation or general operating, but we tried to keep that aside, and we'd let that build so we could take on a bigger project. And if you look later in the slides, we'll talk about when those first came in, and you'll be able to see that. The last three bars, you see the pre-audit and the estimated for 2019 with and without the TPT. So, we had the, the projects that we wanted to do for the year, we had proposals ready, and we were going to bring those to council in August, but with the potential that we'd lose our funding and we would not receive the total allocations to fund those contracts, we opted to wait on that and pending the outcome of the election. Right now, our plan, we're, we're late into the year. If you guys had, had wanted to set a priority to try and take something on with the funding I have, we're late in the year to try and get scheduled in. So we're going to roll this money into next year and combine that with what we have. And then the proposals, assuming that the costs don't go up significantly between this year and next year, we'd like to get those revamped, and hopefully we can fund those proposals for next year. This slide shows the relationship between preservation funding and spending and the PCI. So the blue line on the top is our, our average network PCI, and then the yellow line on the bottom is the actual funding levels. So if you look, it's, it's kind of sharp at the point on the blue line when you get down toward 2015, but you can kind of see that deterioration curve, and you can see how that correlates to the funding. Our funding went to pretty much zero in 2012, and you can watch that curve on that chart. If we were tracking that in, say, six-month increments, you would see a perfect deterioration curve right there. You know? But in, in correlation to that, when you look back to close to 2007, where you had an increase in budget to one-point-six million dollars, it only equates to a little bump on the, the PCI increase. So, once we stop funding and we stop, stop maintaining our asphalt, that deterioration curve will, will take effect and, and really catch up to us pretty quickly. So talk about our toolbox a little bit. Pavement preservation, everybody has their own version of their toolbox, and these are the treatments that we use. Some of these we've used, some of these were slated to be used this year and in the future, and kind of got an associated cost with those. Now, keep in mind, costs are project-specific typically, some things not so much, but, you know, preventative maintenance treatment in the middle of Stockton Hill is going to be different cost than a preventative maintenance treatment in a residential neighborhood, just by the nature of the beast. Stockton Hill is a bear to drive around, let alone work in the middle of, so you typically see higher cost just by traffic control and some other things. But, we talked about crack seal, fog seal, high-density mineral bond. That was a, a new treatment we've tried. We've been trying to reach out. Our pavement preservation program pretty well consisted of nothing but chip seal in the past, which was effective. You know, our, we were, we were holding on as well as we could with the budget they had, but they were doing all the chip seal in-house and keeping the cost as low as they could. But we've tried to reach out and, and use different products, different treatments. Ones that are more cost-effective, maybe have a better life cycle on them, that are more publicly accepted. We've really been trying to expand that toolbox. The, the asphalt industry is growing daily. There's new technology, new treatments, new methods out there. We have to evaluate those, because just because it's new doesn't mean we want to jump on that bandwagon, but we definitely want to evaluate each one of those. Going back, and you can kind of see in the, in the backside, it's grayed out a little bit, but you can see those life cycle costs, and you can see how that works out on each one of the, the, the life cycle curves. And still, it's kind of shaded in there pretty well, with the green one at the top, and then how that white one comes down to the bottom when you're getting into the reconstruction range. As funding allows, we try and go into a neighborhood approach. The end game is really to break into districts, and then we'll go in and we'll do everything in the district. That may not be the same treatment, because if we go into a neighborhood and this one needs a seal coat, and this one needs an overlay or slurry or chip seal, we're going to break that down project-specific in that neighborhood. But we'll be able to attack those neighborhoods, and then when we go in, the entire thing's done. We're not coming back and impacting the residents multiple times. We're not coming back and getting charges for Mobe fees and, and, you know, contractors lost, lost time. We've also reached out and started using a lot of cooperative contracts. When you look at the Valley Cities, they get a lot better price because they have such large volumes. So, we've been jumping on that bandwagon, which is great because Tina doesn't have to yell at me, I don't have to do the procurement side, and it's really a lot faster, and we've been getting really good prices on that. Some items are just not, there's no contractors locally that do that, and, and really all of them, with the exception of some asphalt. And so when you look at the high-density mineral bond, or if you look at the bonded surface wearing course down there in the rehabilitation, that's Nova Bond is the generic term for that, and that was a project we did on Stockton Hill. That was a new treatment that we haven't tried. There's actually only one paver really in the western region that can do that. And again, that was a contract that we used a cooperative with. Excuse me. We've also been doing a little deeper analysis when we go into a project. Really good success story on that is Stockton Hill, the waterline project and the paving project. Initially, we were really hoping that would come in at about one-point-eight, but we were expecting over two million dollars, because the asphalt section, looking at the failures we were seeing, I was predicting that that would be a full asphalt section replacement. But working with engineering and, and a geotech firm, we went in, pulled some samples, evaluated the cores, evaluated the soils underneath the asphalt, the subgrade and the base, and they were, they gave us a, oh, awesome. Thank you. Saving me all the time. And they were able to evaluate the, the structural rating of the road and recommended that we back down to a two-and-a-half minimum thickness on a milling fill, but a three-inch thickness if we could do that, funding-wise. So we went from a project that was one-point-eight to two million plus, and we shaved over seven-hundred thousand dollars off of that by spending about twenty thousand, which sounds like a lot, but you figure, we spent twenty thousand and saved seven-hundred thousand, the math seems to work out. And lunch was my best subject in school, not, not math. Sorry, I use on the lot, huh? So talk about the projects that we've actually completed. Starting in fiscal year fourteen, the fund for the barn and restaurant tax was allowed to build up a little bit, and then we completed the first project in there. So that was a little over quarter-million square yards of, of chip seal, all done in-house. And I focused on arterios and collectors. That was Andy Devine and Wallopie and the big expensive roads that had been kind of neglected for a while, and we wanted to make sure that those didn't fall apart because those are the big expensive roads. Fifteen, we really upped that, and again, we did arterios and collectors, but we did almost three-hundred-and-sixty thousand square yards. That's a pretty, pretty large project for what we have in-house. Fiscal year sixteen, we didn't do a chip seal, but we had a larger project for chip seal, or I'm sorry, for milling fill. And that was the first milling fill on Stockton Hill, which we completed between Detroit and, and Airway. And then we went to seventeen, and this is where we got to open up our toolbox a little bit. We did in-house almost four-hundred thousand square yards of chip seal, and then we did a little over three-hundred thousand square yards of the high-density mineral bond. So downtown, around the complex on Beale Street, that was all the high-density mineral bond. As well, just a side note, that's actually manufactured at the airport. Contractors not from here, obviously, but it is manufactured here locally. Hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand pounds of crack seal was placed for those projects. That's a pretty significant amount. Fiscal year eighteen, we completed the milling fill of Andy Devine between Fifth Street and Stockton Hill, and then we went on later in the fiscal year and rolled some funds over and completed the milling fill, which is a Nova Bond project, the bonded surface wearing course we were talking about, on Stockton Hill from Detroit to the bridge decks on Wallopie. And as well, we replaced a small section of Andy Devine to get through the intersection. So, on the next milling fill, we'll be able to take off, whenever that occurs, we'll be clear of the intersection, we won't have to deal with that again. That was the first TPT-funded project, specifically the Nova Bond. The amount allocated that it cost to do the Nova Bond was funded by the TPT. We also did six-thousand square yards of facility parking lots, maintenance treatments. People are going to say, well, why are we doing parking lots? Those are still public facilities, we have people coming in and out of those, and it's asphalt. If it's asphalt on a road or asphalt in a parking lot, they cost us similarly, and they still need to be maintained either way. This doesn't include the pavement treatments that were done at the terminal and the Airport Authority Building, whatever it is now, at the airport at the time. Those were funded different, separately. Fiscal year nineteen, this year we're slated to do forty-five thousand square yards of milling fill. This is a Stockton Hill project. Engineering has that underway along with the waterline replacement contract, slated sometime in the spring to be completed. We had seven-hundred-and-forty-one thousand square yards plus of different maintenance treatments between seal coats and scrub seals and chip seals that we were planning on doing, but with the cancellation of the TPT, we couldn't fund the entire project. And so, whatever money that we were short is obviously gone, but what we would, we are out, going to have collected this year, we're going to roll over to next year to hopefully fund those projects. Part of that is an economy of scale. I could have tried to pick these contracts apart and got contractors here. The downside is, the price doesn't stick when your, when your quantities fall, so. These are the areas that we were looking at doing this year, and again, this was a multitude of treatments. So you look at the roads that were in good condition, those would be treatments separate from the roads that are in the poor and very poor condition categories. This would have completed, this would have completed almost a quarter of our lane miles in our network with this one project. Again, we have the proposals ready, but with the, the TPT being placed on the, the ballot, we chose to wait, assuming we may not be able to fund those projects. Moving forward, you guys, a couple of you guys have seen this before. So, with the pavement preservation system that we use, management system, we can run different budget scenarios. And we can say, okay, we want to maintain the status quo, just hold the PCI. Or, okay, we know we're going to have two million dollars or five million dollars a year, what will this do? Where should we be working? What will our network be looking like? We opted to go with a target-driven scenario, so we chose to take a ten-point PCI increase. So we're going to take our PCI from where it is currently up, and you can see this one's actually not reflective of the, the decrease in our PCI that we've seen, up to the, a ten-point increase. And what's that going to cost us in spending each year? Now, one thing to keep in mind, you see these numbers fluctuate, we would probably have a more steady number, and then we would just adjust projects up and down to fit inside that. But what you're looking at right here is five-point-two-eight million dollars a year on average, a little over fifty-two million dollars, almost fifty-three million. I say a little, it's quite a bit, eight-hundred thousand, quite a bit over fifty-two. But you're looking at almost fifty-three million dollars worth of work over the next ten years. One thing that is not reflected in these costs is thirty to forty percent that we'll see for some of these projects, which will be ADA improvements. You guys see the TPT, or I'm sorry, not the TPT, you guys see the ADA improvements that are being done, and those are related to milling fills. Typically, depending on the age, which a lot of Keeman is pretty old, does not fall within the regulations and needs to be updated with a project. So, again, this is a ten-point increase over ten years. You're going to see the big increase that we had in the, in the dashboard I showed you, but keep in mind, that was a sharp increase, but it's going to be a sharp decrease because we're doing treatments on roads that really should have been milled out and, and replaced or had some other treatment than what we could afford at the time. But just trying to stretch those out and prevent as much of the potholing and the issues that we were having and not let them get any worse, mainly what that consisted of was chip sealing. Using some different binders, some different oil, but it was still a chip seal in the end. So with that, I will take any questions.
Jack, I have some questions. So, since two thousand or two thousand and one to now, the city's been raising enablement for a little over eight-hundred thousand dollars a year in the pavement preservation budget. And that's gotten us to a point to where we have a PCI system-wide of forty-two, right? And over sixty percent of our roads are either in poor or very poor condition. When they're in poor or very poor, does that mean that they need to be reconstructed?
So a portion of those that are in very poor, we can get by with doing rehabilitation. That may be, and, and so this is going to be assessed project by project, or really section by section, but we can probably do rehabilitations on those. Once they get into the very poor, they're failed, there, there's not a lot we can do. We can try some alternatives, but the, the real treatment for those would be a reconstruct, to mill it out or remove it and repave it.
So my, my ultimate question is, you mentioned, is it system-wide that we have, the city has less than a ten-year service life? Citywide, is that, did I hear that right?
Yeah, so if you, if you look back at the, the PCI map that I showed you, so, the PCI being in that, that ten-year range is going to be comparable. The roads that are in the red are, are facing a ten-year service life. That may be plus or minus, obviously, that's an average, but you're going to be pretty close to the ten-year.
My question is this, I mean, we, we've seen what, eight-hundred thousand dollars a year since two thousand and one, what that gets us. At what point does this city get to the point where, you are already at sixty percent, that's either poor, very poor condition, and at what point does the city get to a place where a majority of its roads need to be reconstructed? And I didn't think that there's any city in America that would be able to reconstruct all of their roads, right? So, this is a huge problem.
Absolutely.
We need to find a way.
Absolutely.
To tackle.
And again, that, that doesn't affect just me as the street superintendent, I'm not complaining about taking complaints. You know, that affects us all, my family, your family, you know, the guy standing in the back of the room.
I mean, if you get to a point where you need to reconstruct a majority of your roadways, it's, it's kind of game over, because you're never going to recover from that, right? I mean, how would you recover from that?
I don't want to say game over, because I, quite honestly, I'm, the only reason I'm standing here because I'm too dumb to quit, and that sounds, that sounds bad, but I mean, that's really the gist of it. We can beat it, but where it comes down to is it's going to require funding. We can do everything we want to, but when you're talking about beating this thing, it's throwing money at it.
Yeah. If you stick your headless here, that's another mild strategy to do before, you and the city.
Absolutely.
We, you had mentioned Keeman in comparison to all the other cities or areas that are also using your system. And we're in the low, in the lowest twenty-fifth percentile. So spending over five million dollars a year... So spending over five million dollars a year over ten years to go up ten points, which is only a fifty-five, correct? Where does that put us then at fifty-five? So, I mean, cuz that's a lot of money to just, to only come up ten points in comparison to other cities. Where does fifty-five get you? Are you, are you even close to the middle of the bracket to, to compete with other cities and, and what their roads look like?
I honestly don't know where those curves meet. Um, I'd be happy to see if I could pull that information. Uh, it's not typically something I see or not something I've seen on the reports I get because they, they show us where we're at. Um, I could call and, and talk to Street Saver and say, okay, you know, if I got to fifty-five, they should be able to kind of give me an idea, but I don't have an answer for that right now.
I would imagine that it doesn't even move you up much higher because fifty-five is still fairly poor, isn't it?
Um, yeah, I mean, our target at the very minimum, if we're, if we're in sixty-five, we're doing a lot better, obviously, cuz a lot of agencies are in the sixty-nine range. My goal.
Twenty points higher.
Yeah, yeah, so I, yeah, so I guess if you looked at it, you could, you could average that out. But my goal would be at the bare minimum of seventy. Really, we'd like to be in that seventy-five range. If we could hold our roads at a seventy-five, we're doing really, really well. If we get above that, we're, we're making an example at that point. You're not gonna find a lot of people that are, are of large size that are holding their PCIs, you know, in the eighty somewhere. Um, there's a, there's a break-even point, too. You can spend more money than you're really getting in return, even on a good road, so you gotta balance that out.
I'm curious, oh, sorry. Excuse me, I'm, I was just gonna say, I'm curious how many years and how many dollars it would take to get into the seventies.
So I can run that report. Um, I could say, uh, and actually, I don't have that on me. I've actually ran that report. And I wanna say it was somewhere in the eighty or ninety million dollar range. Um, it was, it was pretty significant. I mean, we're already looking at fifty-five million, but it was a one-year, okay, if we had all the money, if, if the banks opened the doors and it was free for grabs, what could we really do? Um, I do have that number and if you'd like, I could provide that to Manager Foggan and, and share that with you as well.
I am curious, but over time, because eighty million today, that's today's dollars and you know that it's gonna take time to get to seventy, so I'm just wondering.
So, I mean, quite, quite honestly, or at least hopefully, when I'm looking at doing a ten-point PCI increase, I would be retiring about the time we got into the seventy range. If not, something went wrong either with me or the economy or whatever. But, uh, you, you're looking at a pretty significant project to get from where we are now into that seventy range.
Well, my, my question is sort of a variation of that question. Do we know at this time how we compare with other cities? I mean, is Bullhead and Havasu, are they at a forty-six or twenty-two or where we're at right now?
So we've talked to Bullhead a little bit, exactly where they're at right now. Um, I don't have the answer for that. What you have to be careful with or where it may, gets hard to make apples-to-apples comparison is we use a PCI. There are other people that use a different scale. You can kind of compare those. Um, as far as regionally, I'm not sure where we rank. What we're looking at is, the data that I see is where we rank in similar-sized agencies that are utilizing the same software.
Their, their, um, let's see, they, look at City Bullhead City, their, their annual pavement preservation budget balance is in the millions. I, I know that Rob, I asked that question maybe a year ago, remember? You know, it was in the millions, four, five hundred dollars a year.
Havasu has a pretty robust budget, um, and they're, they're pretty proactive on it. Bullhead, I can't remember the exact dollar amount. We went down and talked to them. Where Bullhead's unique is they bought a slurry rig and they're slurring all their roads. Um, I can't say that's the right treatment or the wrong treatment. They're using it as a shotgun approach rather than going out and chip sealing everything. They're just slurring everything. Their material cost for their slurry was really cheap. Um, when, when you look at the labor costs and everything that go into, they actually had a lot of that calculated. So their slurry price was really cheap when you're looking at doing that in-house. But you're looking at hiring an additional five to six people and you're also looking at purchasing a half-million-dollar truck. And where they are lucky or fortunate or not fortunate, depending on how you look at it, is they have weather to where they're actually working all year round. Um, they shut down for a short period. Where we shut down because it's too cold, they shut down because it's too hot, so. Um, their, their program, what they had working for them at the time was, was doing well. Uh, long-term, I don't know how that'll work out, just, just using a shotgun approach to their treatments.
Thank you so much for giving this presentation. Was this the first time you gave it over a year and a half now? I think it was a while ago, but.
Yeah, the, going back to, to the funding strategies and things we were looking at, um, was after the implementation of the program, probably in twenty sixteen when we'd completed the inventory. We did a little one in twenty fifteen talking about it, but we didn't have the numbers that we can use here because we were trying to implement that, that inventory and get that, that system up and running.
Well, I want, I want to thank you because it goes back to your point about educating the public. There's been a great attempt and, and you're part of, you're mainstay of that great attempt to educate on our streets and I really appreciate it. And if I, you know, I, I do remember you starting that program and then coming back, I think it was about a year and a half ago, to give us more specific numbers, about twenty-five percentile that we're in. I think with the tax, we got it up to a little over four million dollars a year, which was close to your five million dollars. Still only gets us up ten points in ten years. But now with the withdrawal of that budget, what do you think the impact could be in ten years if there's nothing done?
It, it's significant, so, um, and, and I, I don't wanna be an Armageddon or doomsday guy, but I can run budget scenarios ten years out and I can actually print a map for what those look like, you know, year one versus year ten. And, and try and weight roads. So the management software doesn't just do this. You don't grab it out of the box and, and run with it. There's a lot of setup that goes into this and, and we can, and I don't wanna say manipulate, but we can, we can change the numbers to weight our arterials versus our collectors versus residential roads. And where that comes in is I say, okay, my funding strategy, strategy, I'm gonna weight my, my arterials heavily and try and hold those together and then do what I can in the neighborhoods. You know, we're talking about the arterials and going back to commercial development, economic development and fire EMS, all that stuff ties into arterials. You know, everybody eventually gets off collectors and into residentials, but when you're talking about the bulk of what we move, Stockton Hill sees, you know, thirty thousand cars a day. So we, we focus on those and that's where I set the highest priority. Um, I can, I can actually go in and say, hey, let's increase the PCI. And I can make an increase at that five-million-dollar budget greater than what I'm showing you with that strategy. But the downside is when you run a budget scenario and you look at ten years later, every arterial and every collector in town, Stockton Hill, Airway, Gordon, Walopie Mountain, all those are in poor condition. So, um, then that becomes, yeah, we got, the majority of the neighborhoods are good, but the most expensive and the most travel roads we have are now in a failing condition. So, um, where we're at right now, if we can't find a way to increase funding, again, not to be a doomsday guy, but, uh, it's not gonna get any better.
Thank you.
To answer that fully, there's, the answer is that you're gonna have residential streets that have been paved that are gonna need to be pulverized and go back to gravel. And that has happened in communities. It has happened in communities where, you know, I, I'm, you know, this isn't unique to Kingman. This, this is across the country. And it does force us to look at the policy. Jack indicated that spending priorities become collector and arterial roads that support economic development and the movement of goods and services and, and customers in which are gonna utilize those. But the downside of that is as soon as we start talking about gravel roads in residential areas, it, that, that is where, where we could ultimately be headed. And at the same time, remembering that the value of your home and the property and the investment that you made to, to your home goes along with the street that's out in front of your home. So it has far-reaching effects on, on the residential side. If in fact, we, we adopted a policy that said, okay, whatever money we do have is gonna go into collector and arterial roads and residential roads. As I indicated, there have been communities that have had to make that choice and they've made the choice to have residence, some of their residential streets be pulverized and go back to the ground, so.
Thank you.
No one else? Well, thanks for staying away. I'll try not to bore you guys. Good presentation. All right, the last section, um, that we have is the possible or discussion of revenue streams as we move forward. We've, of course, talked about capital projects, the large amount of livability projects that we would like to see over the years, as well as the ones that we have to take on. Of course, Jack's, uh, reality is always kind of a slap in the face. And as I indicated, um, there are a lot of communities that are dealing with this. Obviously, some to a greater degree and some to a lesser degree. Uh, we, we have a pretty big uphill battle. Um, but one of the things that we wanted to talk about is what are the revenue possibilities as we move forward? To deal with capital projects, to deal with just the O and M costs of, of operating this organization. And also, how do we tackle the streets? And so, um, this isn't an exhaustive list. It is, and I wanna let everybody know that we're gonna continue to look for revenue sources and cost-saving opportunities as we build budgets. Um, so, don't think that, that we've got all the answers, but we wanna walk you through some of the, the main things that have been talked about, um, over the last few months. And so we wanna talk, uh, one of the things that we, we recognize in this community is that as a community, we live solely off of state shared revenue and sales tax. So we currently have the, the citizens of our community and the businesses of our community pay no property tax to the city of Kingman. That decision, uh, was made, uh, by the forefathers of this community back in the early eighties. And, um, so, um, there is property tax as perhaps an option. The TPT, uh, which everybody, I think, recognizes is sales tax. Uh, we're gonna have a few comments with regards to sales tax and what, where our options are there. Development investment fees, uh, the layman term on that, uh, tends to creep out. You'll hear me use it from time to time is impact fees, but, um, they're really known here in the state as DIFs or development investment fees. And then the last thing I wanted to just talk to you about is street, public safety and stormwater fees. Stormwater is one of those things that is actually treated as, as a utility. Uh, we haven't talked about any of the utility funds, um, but because, uh, of our recent issues with flooding and the, what we're dealing with, with streets, it actually felt like an appropriate conversation to have because stormwater, um, deals with streets and improvement of streets. So it could actually help us do a little bit of improvement in, in our street conditions. So property tax, um, one of the things that we wanted to kind of show you is what is, what is currently our assessed value? And what, what would revenue look like if we had a small or a primary property tax for general, um, operations? And, um, the Tina, I think, did a, a nice job on this showing, uh, what if, you know, what, uh, would we gain in revenue? Um, based on the, of property tax and then what would it cost a property of a hundred thousand dollars? Um, so if we were to adopt, uh, a relatively, a pretty small property tax of a dollar forty-seven, that would cost the property owner that had property in the city, uh, that was valued at a hundred thousand dollars, would cost them just under a hundred and fifty bucks a year. It would generate three million dollars. And, um, of course, um, if that was to march up, uh, or to be adopted at three, just under three twenty-five, um, that would be a pretty, pretty big difference in the general fund, six point, you know, six point six million. And it's interesting, as we were talking about some of these challenges, specifically road, you, you have to start looking, if, if you're gonna take the road issue on and this is the way you were gonna do it, you're, you're probably looking at, at a tax rate that's around two dollars and fifty cents. And that, that would just take on pretty much your road, your road issue. Um, because that would generate, uh, just over five million dollars at, at two fifty. So there is, there is that option. And not suggesting that we, we move forward, but as I said, we're just trying to throw out some of the ideas, um, that are out there. So, um, more than fifty percent of Arizona cities and towns have a primary property tax. Uh, fifty-nine, uh, cities and towns operate their own police and fire departments. And of those fifty-nine, fourteen do not have a primary property tax. And of course, we are one of those fourteen. So it kind of shows you that, that these, these services that are, of course, especially in our rural area, in a, in a large community that requires heavy support from both fire and police, uh, extremely important, but also a big hit in the general fund. Um, and so we're doing that along with fourteen other communities, uh, with only sales tax. So just wanted to point out on this slide that, um, the community, so those fourteen communities that we talked about, their property, that are working without a property tax that operate police and fire. Uh, the thing that, um, is, is worth noting is that Kingman, um, and as I said, the TPT, one of the things that we are not doing in this community with TPT is we're not collecting TPT on food. And that becomes, uh, a, a pretty big number. Uh, I think that's in the next slide, Tina. Um, but, uh, wanted to show you kind of how we compare to these other communities. What's interesting is that the city of Kingman at just under thirty thousand, um, are, the next closest population group, grouping that we have is, uh, San Luis. Um, not sure that that's really a great comparison. They are, um, somewhat of a rural community. Um, but you'll go across that chart and notice that their TPT rate is, is four percent and they're collecting four percent on food. Um, and food TPT, if you don't know this, is that, uh, if you have sales tax, the most, the steadiest and most, the, the guaranteed sales tax on anything is food because of course, the consumption. And, um, there's, there's, there's part of our challenge right there. So just wanted to point that out. And I guess I would be remiss if I didn't point out secondary property tax for, for Mesa. Uh, they've, they've, they've actually, um, they actually do have a secondary property, uh, tax in Mesa and Gilbert. So they do have supplement, a little bit of supplement to their property.
Is that for their fire or under public safety?
Tina, do you know? I'm not sure. Yeah, we're not sure. Um, our, where we stand currently, uh, with our TPT rates as of January, we are at two and a half percent for regular general fund, uh, sales tax or TPT. We have a one percent add at the restaurant and bar, uh, bars. And Jack made mention in that we're using this, that money for roads. And then we have a two percent for hotels, an additional two percent, and that is dedicated to our tourism, which Tina discussed already. And then two percent for just, uh, again, hotels, working off of the, the tourism industry, uh, for the general capital projects. And so additional revenue by TPT rate, um, as you can see, as you add, it, obviously, the, the money goes up and, uh, and it kind of gives you a feel for what we'd need to be, just again, to cover streets as, as needed. So, you know, we're, we're talking about if we were, if we were, where we were with streets was that, that half percent, which put us just under the three point five million. was that, that half percent, which put us just under the three point five million, which, you know, the, I think the idea, I wasn't here when the council made that decision, but it was, hey, let's, let's see us make at least a dent in what we're doing. And so, and, and we will later talk about what hap, what, what our plans are, what can happen with this, so. All right. Development investment fees. Development investment fees are paid by new construction, whether it be residential or commercial. And it, it applies only to new construction. It applies to new construction if, if folks are adding on to their homes or to their businesses. It applies to, to straight-up new building projects. These are allowed within the state. It does not require a voter approval. And to, to implement them, it takes two, approximately two hundred and seventy days. That's advertising and public meetings. And so, the process is pretty lengthy. The development investment fees, the DIFs, pay for, can be used to pay for the general building, public buildings. An example of use of those in the past has been the city purchased the building that the dispatch center's in and, and the attorney's office is in. And then, public safety, that's both police and fire. And again, that's, that's not to pay personnel, that's to pay infrastructure, you know, to build and buy, can you buy fire trucks with it?
I don't know. We have purchased, we've upgraded computer software and hardware.
Yeah, okay, so you probably can. Anyway, and then, you have the standard one, which is parks, transportation, stormwater, and of course, library. We don't, we don't have libraries, so we wouldn't worry necessarily about that one. We had DIFs in two thousand and seven, and they were, it was decided by the council in two thousand and twelve that DIFs needed to go away. The, the city did keep the sewer diff because they were, they had borrowed money. And so, the current, currently what we collect goes towards paying off debt of two, of the two sewer plants. And so, in twenty twenty-eight, oh, actually, in twenty thirty, if we, if we take no additional steps for adoption of DIFs, then that sewer one would go away as well, so. Questions about what we, what can be done with this? So, it, it, the, on the roads, it does not solve Jack's presentation really at, at all. Okay? It, it's can only go for new or upsizing. So, it really helps us on, well, our Rancho Santa Fe project. It helps us on the Kingman Crossing project. Any new roads, any upsizing of roads, then that would help us. Yes, Travis?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the one pro to these development investment fees that would get away from the property tax, property tax, you have so many people here that are consumed by already. And it's only good, that whole thing is shoulder down our population, it's, it's right. Going here, I mean, you look at the shopping centers that are owned, I mean, you would have to live in Kingman, own businesses in Kingman, right? Or to go home in Kingman or whatever, right? So, it would be, it would be a little bit more fair spreading out the, the cost, right?
So, if you, if you think about, so if you think, the best way to think of development investment fees are to think of Kingman, we, we have this club. And we have members of the Kingman Club that have been paying, they, they've been here for their entire life, and they've helped pay for the infrastructure. And so, anybody new that comes to town, they basically pay to get into the club. That, that extra straw that they're stinking, they, that they're sticking into the, into the drink, they pay for. And that's, that's really the best way to look at, at those fees. They're not reoccurring, it, they're one-time revenues. That when you build a new house or you build a new business, it's basically recognizing that their impact, they have an impact to all the syst, all of these systems. That's how the word, that's how the, the generic terminology, impact fee, came to be. Is it was, it was basically new people moving into the community that were impacting the systems. You can do one of two things with that. You can put the burden of that new growth and the expansion of your water facilities, your sewer facilities, you can put it on the ratepayers and everybody pays together. Or you can charge the new folks that are adding new buildings and put, tying those new buildings into the infrastructure. You can have them pay a one-time fee to kind of catch up with what everybody else in the community's been paying. And that's, that's really how, how to look at that.
Well, in a way, it's, the cool thing with the TPT that was just repealed is that the house paid by people that are using those services, right? And this is the same thing, but this is paid by people that are using services.
Yeah, it's, it's the people that are going to start using our services. That's exactly right. So, you move to town, the street needs to be widened, you're going to help pay for that widened street. Or the pipe, the water pipe needs to go from six inches to eight inches. You're going to pay for that extra two inches. And it's not going to be paid by those people that are already living in the community. So, you're absolutely right.
Downside?
Um, the downside is that the building community doesn't like it.
And as the economy starts to falter, growth stops.
If, so, the, there's not, that's not a downside, right?
It's growth pace for growth, right?
Growth, growth, and if, if, if there's no building, there's no impact fees or development investment fees, but there's no infrastructure to build either. So, yeah, I mean, it, the, 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 the downside is that a house that was, was being built and was being marketed for, let's say, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. If you have development investment fees of, let's use a nice, easy number, ten thousand dollars, that, that house may go from two hundred and thirty-five thousand to two hundred and forty-five thousand. So, that's, that's where, that's, that, that is perceived to be the downside of, of impact, or development investment fees, so. Yes, ma'am?
I, I understand the, on impact fees. And I, I think that growth paying for growth is, is a good thing. But I do think that at the end of the day, since it doesn't pay for infrastructure and the streets and everything the city needs, such as water, we're going to have to look at a package of options.
Yep, yep, yep.
And I will say one thing about food tax. I'm always resistant to food tax because I feel like it is a tax on the food and it hits the low-income the hardest. I recognize in this environment we're going to have to have a discussion. But, and I've never been as opposed to primary property tax as, as some, as I know some are. So, it's going to be an interesting discussion. But I think my, my thought is we're going to have to have a mix of options that we address which can truly address the deficit that we're now facing.
Yeah, and that's, that's the point of this presentation, is to let you know that, that this is going to be a multi-faceted look and approach to trying to solve or attack these issues that are, that are in front of us. You know, there's, there's data showing that, you know, back to sales tax and food on sales tax is that, that out of all the taxes that are levied on a municipal level, that sales tax on food's the fairest. Because those folks that can only afford ramen and the lowest-priced milk pay on those lowest-priced products. And those people that can afford T-bone and organic milk pay a much higher price in sales tax on their food. So, there, there is, there is that, there is that, that argument out there that whether, you know, whether we like it or not. But there, there is, there is, there, there is some data out there that talks about that. But this, again, this is multi-faceted. So, we are, I will tell you that as part of, part of the budget process, we will be looking at these and making, bringing, we're not going to just show up with, here's all the problems. That's not the point of this. You know, Jack's presentation is, boy, we're just going to depress you and the world's coming to an end. We're actually going to show up with suggested helps. So, I'm not going to leave you without any solutions. So, any other questions about DIFs? Development investment fees?
I think there's a site that does say how much revenue the DIFs could bring in.
I think it's the next one, right?
Okay. I don't think I'm ahead of that.
Yeah. Yeah, so this, this is a sample of what the development investment fee would look like for the different places that we could spend the money or where we need the money. And obviously, these are just estimates based on where we were in two thousand and twelve when the decision was made to have them go away. It's, it's interesting. I don't know that it answers a lot of questions for us because when we actually do the analysis, it, it'll say something, I'm guessing, a lot different. But, but looking at, at this gives you a pretty good feel where a single-family residence would be. And this, this does not have water or sewer as part of that. So, it, it would be even higher than this. But, questions? Just, just an example. All right. This shows you where we were with the DIFs prior to them going away in fiscal year two thousand and twelve. It's, it's interesting that the, the, of course, we all know that about right in here, the, the magic date, I, I remember it pretty clearly, was June of two thousand and seven. The wheels really became clear that they were falling off, the development, uh, new development car. And it's what, I will say is that the Kingman probably decided a little too late to do away with DIFs in, in order to help. It probably would have been more appropriate back in the two thousand and nine. I think the mistake that we've made was, was not to have some relook at that at, in, you know, in a five-year period to say, okay, we're going to do away with them, but in three years, we're going to reexamine how the economy's going and is growth back. Because right now, with, without those, whatever improvements have to happen new, based on new development, are going to, right now, be on the backs of, of the ratepayers as, as a whole, right? And one of the things, I know the council, I know that the team, leadership team doesn't want to show up and suggest increased rates for things. But that's, if, if we continue in this path, that's, that's the trade-off. We either have development investment fees for the growth or we have a rate increase, so. Questions about this? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. All right. So, for water DIFs, this is what we would make based on the size of the service that the, the, the home or business needed. And as you can see, the more water use you have, so if a big industry that's a heavy water user is going to need a big line, they're going to pay a much, much higher price. Now, I will tell you that an eight-inch water line into a business is a ginormous water line. I mean, it is huge. I, I actually can't foresee us ever providing that based on where our water is. I think we'd actually invite them to go somewhere else unless they could show us how we were going to regain the water. But, you know, again, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars sounds like a lot. But for a company that can afford or needs an eight-inch line, this is, this is within what they expect to pay when they come and start impacting a community. So, I know a lot of times I've been involved in conversations where you have big users, they've got big impact fee bills or development investment fee bills, and they want to talk about how they're going to get a, a discount on them. And my response has always been, well, you're impacting the system. My recommendation is that we do not forgive this. If there's other places in which we can give incentives, that's the place. Or you have to admit that you're going to put that burden on, on the rate users as a whole. So, this is what it would look like. A standard home, of course, is at the top. So, a water with, with a three-quarter inch connection, which is fairly standard, is going to be eighteen hundred dollars. That's a one, one-time fee for that new home. All right. Did I go the wrong way? Okay. So, the history for water and wastewater. I knew we had this in that light. So, wastewater, of course, we, we've maintained that because we expanded our sewer plants. So, of course, in two thousand and twelve, water goes away. I guess we collected twenty-five dollars? Yeah, twenty-five thousand dollars. But wastewater, because the city made the decision to expand both of their sewer plants, which is a very wise decision. We have a large amount of growth within those plants. So, we don't sit around and worry about there being too much sewer because the city was proactive in that. But the bond for those two plants, how, how big was that? Did that end up being?
I suppose it's close to, oh, no, close to fifty, thirty.
Thirty-five million? Is that what it was? Do you remember, Rob?
I think it was about fifty million between the two of them.
Fifty million between the two of them. So, it was a huge investment by the community. And again, recognizing that people that were coming to town were going to, that's the reason we needed to expand them, that they were going to pay for that over time. So, that, that continues. And as I said, when those bonds pay off, the last bond pays off in two thousand and thirty, that will look just like water if we do nothing else, which will be zero. All right. So, some other fees. Some of the things that we've been looking at are the potential of having a street fee or some kind of public safety fee on the utility bill. This has been done in other states by other municipalities. Carl's been kind enough to research this. This is not within our ability to do, okay? This, this is not on the table for us in the state of Arizona. So, we, we cannot have or recognize streets as a utility and have some kind of utility fee for streets, although it serves like most of our other utilities. There's no way to attach a user fee to it. Same with the public safety fees. That one would be a straight-up considered tax and just not allowed. So, just wanted to let everybody know that one. The one, the one thing that I did want to point out, it's not, again, not part of this general fund or streets conversation, but it does help with streets somewhat, is a stormwater fee. That is, the stormwater utility is, we saw the failings of our, of our drainage system through this last, well, the, the monsoon was pretty tough on us, but the storms in October really showed us where our weaknesses were. And I know there's people in this room that were dramatically affected by this, and we had a lot of residents. I, we're still dealing with the fallout of, of the drainage issues. So, it is one thing, I can promise you that as, as we work on the budget, that we are going- that we are going to bring, uh, some ideas for stormwater fees. And I know the engineering department, along with Public Works, is working on remedial drainage capital projects and so that we know where to, where the right place is to focus that money and that we can have enough, some money to take care of the drainage facilities that we have, which right now is catch as catch can. Uh, right now, we're dealing with drainage fees with what the, what the county collects and passes on to us as part of our distribution of stormwater fees. So, questions about these? Okay. Oh, I guess I shouldn't mention it. Based, based on where we are, on a very simple calculation, if every utility, uh, user, uh, paid in two dollars per month, we would collect an additional three hundred thousand dollars a year to put towards stormwater projects and maintenance. Five dollars gets us just under eight hundred thousand dollars, which is about, is that about what we're collecting, we're getting now from the county?
About six hundred.
About, so it's a little over what we're currently getting. So it would, it would actually double our budget. All right. Um, before I move on to the calendar, which is our last piece, I, I did wanna mention there's been conversation, uh, we've talked about, um, Bullhead and that they have a fire district as part of their solution. I'm not suggesting that this year we're going to, that we are gonna look at that, but in the future, that may be something that we end up considering as part of that, providing that service. So I know that that's been a conversation I've had with a couple of counselors, asking where we were with that. Just wanna let you know that, that, you know, every, all, you know, anything that we can do is on the table. Um, the other piece is that based on, based on Jack's presentation, I, I don't want everybody to leave here depressed. And then, and with, with, well, I, I, so with that, I, I want to let you know that as part of our budget process and the capital projects and talking about the, her fund and about the street maintenance, that, that we are going to talk to the council about bringing this to the November twenty twenty ballot, specifically streets as something that we've got, that we've got to address and that we can't, and, and we can't ignore the importance of what Jack showed us. And we need to get started. And if that, if, if there's some way for us to get in everybody's home and sit down around their coffee table and give them Jack's presentation, I, I would love to do that. I, I, but it, somehow, some way, we've gotta push that information out and have people understand the condition of our roads. And that, and what that ends up being is, uh, the amount will be something that we need to talk about. And where we spend that money and the prioritization of that money is a policy decision that the council's gonna have to, to tackle. But I can tell you that we are going to bring those kind of ideas to you as part of this budget process. Um, and if there, like I said, if there's any other revenue source or opportunity to be more efficient and effective with the spending, we are going to explore those. We absolutely are going to explore those and we're going to have those conversations. We're not gonna hide from them. It is our reality. Um, so I just, I just wanna let you know that. And this is a multi-pronged approach to solving some big world items. And they make no mistake, they, they are reality. But at the same time, I'm not gonna, as your city manager, I am not going to suggest that you spend all your, your beginning fund balance to zero. That, that, that's not, that is not good management. That is, and it, and where we place any use of one-time revenue has gotta be well thought out and discussed. Yes?
Like, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit.
Excellent.
I knew you'd like that.
Yeah.
One thing that I hear every once in a while is that the city needs to live within its means. And so what we saw tonight from Jack, we need five point six million dollars in order to just barely move our streets up a little bit.
Right.
And in order to realize that five point six million dollar budget, if we were to make cuts, just solid cuts, no increases anywhere, 'cause we're living within our means.
Right.
You know, I've tallied it up in my mind, okay, you close the golf course, the parks, the powerhouse, you just shut everything down, there's no more carts, there is no trash collection, no cycling, we end all services down to only what we are required to give. We cannot get, if I am correct, and I, and I've asked about this before, but if I am correct, you cannot get to that additional five point six million dollars for streets without cutting into police and fire services.
Oh yeah.
And I think that we can all agree that that is an absolute priority for our citizens. They do not wanna see a cut to police protection or fire services. So is there any way to, to cut our budget? I just wanna clarify, to take care of our streets without making huge, huge reductions in, in services that save people's lives?
So if you look at it from the formula of expenditure cutting, there's no way to do that. And, and maintain the service, the services that our citizens expect in this community.
Right.
There's, there's just no way. I mean, there, it's gotta be a combination and, uh, you know, and that is the reality. And the, the other part of that is that, the, the reality is that we're not, we, we're not living, we have not been living within our means for a long. Right, we just kick, we've been kicking the can down the road. That's, that's the reality. When you look at the federal gas tax and recognize that it hasn't been increased since nineteen ninety-two, you don't have to be a great mathematician, Jack, to figure out that inflation alone has basically eliminated what you're, what you're collecting. So, you know, and we're, and again, my commitment, along with my team's commitment, is we're gonna go to transportation meetings and we're gonna go to conferences and we're gonna pitch for the state to adopt a more of gas tax. We're gonna talk and to the county and see, you know, what, what's available, where the county has some, some rights to do some stuff that we don't. Um, not sure that that's been explored fully. Um, but, but the reality is that our parents and our grandparents in the forties and fifties invested in some amazing infrastructure. Fast forward to the mid-nineties and we stopped, we stopped as a, as a country, we stopped for the most part investing in, in our utilities. And it shows by, if you go to the engineers, uh, the National Engineering, um, Organization and look at the scorecard for our nation's infrastructure, you're, you're not as a whole gonna find them in what we would consider to be passing grades. You know, a lot of Ds and, and that, that's, you know, that's due to the fact that we just have not invested in our future. So it is a combination though, it's a combination. Yep.
And I, I do think one of the things that caused people to say that is they see the fund balances. They see, they see that we keep a healthy fund balance.
Right.
So I really appreciate your comments. I imagine that when we go through this project, we're gonna find that our available surplus above our fifty percent is not that great. And so anything we do, it's that one-time expenditure that cuts back that, that, from that fifty percent, and it's not easy to get back. I don't know how we.
Right, well, that's, that's really, that's, that's really the catch, right? If you make the decision and you say, okay, we're gonna spend fund balance down to, let's say, we're gonna, it's a fifty percent, let's just say we're gonna take fund balance and spend it down to thirty-five percent, right? And you're gonna basically say that emergency fund to take care of whatever is gonna be at thirty-five percent and fifty percent. The ability to build that back up over time becomes, it's, first of all, there's no guarantee that you're gonna do that. And second of all, um, you may stay there for a long period of time, right? Right. So, I mean, it, those, those are the challenges that's, you know, that if, if we all had the crystal ball and we could get it out, we would, we would use it in a, in a heartbeat. But with, barring the fact that we don't have a crystal ball, fun, spending fund balance, large amounts of fund balance is, i- is not a wise decision. And it's not, and it's, it's actually best practices for, it is a best practice for a community to, to hold fund balance. It's not, hey, we're, we're collecting all this money and we're gonna hide it or we're gonna, we're gonna put it in, in, in a purse and and walk around with it and feel like we're, we're, we're great. It, it really has a purpose. And, you know, I think one of the things that happens is that when you live in communities, and I've been fortunate to live in those communities, that don't experience major catastrophes and issues, it's easy to get spoiled. Those communities that have a tornado. It must, it must be time to quit. Are we good here? So, but those communities that experience tornado, tornadoes often, or they have hurricanes often, are constantly talking about reaching in and using those monies to keep the doors open and operating. The, and so, you know, like I said, just because we've been lucky to avoid those doesn't mean we can turn a blind eye to them and say, oh, that's never gonna happen. And, you know, and it's, that's hard, that's hard for people to get their arms around. So, anyway, the screen went off. I, I, I don't know how to turn that on. It's time to go home. Uh, just to let you know, the calendar, our budget calendar's in there. Um, we are, the next big budget thing for the council is going to be, and I apologize for this upfront, but I, uh, it's gonna be Saturday, March second. And we're, um, we're gonna do, uh, strategic planning and, um, budget discussion with Patrick Ibarra. Patrick was, uh, the gentleman that was here with us that helped us do our short-term strategic planning last fall. And, um, in that, by the time we have that meeting, we will have the department's capital projects, we'll have the citizen survey completed and digested. We will have the Economic Development Strategic Plan approved by the council. Um, what other piece were we missing? Oh, the, the departments will have, will be able to show you their challenges and their accomplishments, um, as well. We will have, uh, a good, pretty good handle on total compensation by then as well. Um, so I think, I'm looking forward to the March meeting being really productive and having you folks with a lot of information to work through.